Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, January 11th, 2023. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. So if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything that's not related to any agenda item tonight? If so, you can check in with Mary Ann, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Okay, seeing none. All right, I'm going to ask for a public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. All right, ZBA member Scott Goldstein is absent tonight, so sitting in the first hearing will be our four regular board members as well as Bob Caccianno. So Sharon, would you read the first new hearing, please?
65 Redwood Circle petitioner Mike Canada requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an extension to an existing lot on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 27, parcel 94, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record Joseph K. and Catherine C. Choulo.
Okay. Sharon's gonna recuse herself and leave the office here. Okay. Hi.
Hi, guys. How's everybody doing?
Everything's good.
Good, good. So, yeah, so we're working on this building here on 65 Redwood. The building's from the 70s. It had a pre-existing garage that you see on the plane on the front right corner. It's currently not, it's non-compliant, pre-existing non-conforming, as it stands from the 70s. The garage upstairs is somewhat small. It was converted to a kitchen, and we're putting an addition on the building on the backside to move the kitchen back there, and we'd like to turn the garage back into a garage. It was a side-entry garage at one point, meaning you would not enter it from the street side, which was very unusual because the lot is skinny, and it was, access to the door from that angle would be very, very difficult, to say the least. So we'd like to make it straight in from the street. The garage, a normal garage, typical garage is 24-foot square. Standard, this is pretty small, it's around 20. And the space inside there is a bit small for, you know, a standard-sized vehicle. So we're looking for relief of five feet to go toward the street for that new section on the front. The homeowners have an elderly father that they're taking care of, and they bring the vehicle into the garage to assist in getting him in and out of the house, and it's just very tight at 20 feet. So we're asking kindly for relief on the frontage, which is currently non-compliant as it is from the 70s. So I'd like to know if you consider that.
Okay. Question, so you're proposing to extend the garage?
Yeah.
That's not gonna make it any wider, though, right?
No, no change in the width, just moving it forward. If you look at the, I think I gave you guys a plan, the dark shaded area, that five-foot projection that you see.
Yeah, it's colored.
Yes.
Highlighted, I should say.
So you're looking for relief in the front yard, setback, not the front yard?
Front yard setback from the street, correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, but if they're...
We're gonna build closer to the street than it currently exists.
Okay, so the problem when they pull in the garage is it's only 20 feet wide, you said?
It's, oh, yes.
So there's an issue opening the doors and getting in and out?
No, this is a depth, this is a depth issue. So if you open, envision opening the garage door and driving in and having the nose of the car almost hit the front of the house.
Okay.
It's very shallow in depth, front to back. So we'd like to add that five feet so it's not so shallow in depth, front to back, which would be from the street to the, to the back of the house.
Okay, and you're also proposing a 12-by-21 second-story addition?
No, that's a, that's a single, that's a first-floor addition where the new kitchen is going to go. That, that permit for that work's already been issued.
So they're not, they're not asking for that tonight?
So the only thing you're asking for is the five-foot extension?
Yes, yes, sir, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, on the garage.
And it looks like you're installing drywells?
Yes.
Good. And am I missing something, anything?
So what's the existing setback prior to your request?
The, the existing setback is 25 feet, excuse me, I think it's 26 feet, 26 feet. We'd be down to 21, 26.28 feet, to be specific.
And it's going down to 21.28?
Yes, sir.
So what is the setback? I'm not sure.
I believe it's 40 feet.
I believe it's 40.
Yeah, so it's already not, you know, it's not, it's obviously...
So it's an R5?
That's your answer. It's a fine written finding.
Well, so it's 40 feet, they're already non-conforming, and they're looking to become more non-conforming.
Exactly.
Do you also, what is your side yard setback at the five-foot extension that you plan on doing right on that corner? Did you look at that?
I did, it's not shown on the, it's not shown on this...
Because, because it's kitty-corner, the further you, closer you get to the street, the closer you get to the lot line. My question is, is...
Right.
Are you also including on your side yard setback at that point?
Yeah, I don't know that. I mean, I could scale it off.
You might wanna look at that, because if this board were to issue you a front yard setback, and then you went to the billing inspector and asked for an application, and he questioned that mark?
Does you will.
And it didn't meet, you're not getting a permit, I presume, I can't speak for the zoning enforcement officer or the bill inspector, but I would, I'm a little concerned in that as you, because it's kitty-corner, the closer you get to the street, the closer it gets to the side yard.
Good point, Ron.
It is a good point.
I'm sure you would've picked that up.
Yeah, there's no...
I did not. I did not even, I don't know, did we have a setback?
It's just, it's kitty-corner, pretty much, it's not, it's skewed pretty bad, I mean, so...
No, we, we, we didn't have any side, sideline setback.
See, it should be on here anyway.
Issue.
Well, let's put it this way, if it's, if it doesn't meet zoning and he only asked for, and gets what he asked for, he's not gonna get enough if, in fact, it's too close. He's gonna have to come back to his board again if, in fact, he gets what he's asking for and he doesn't ask for that.
It's definitely closer.
It is substantially closer.
Well, and it's closer than what previously...
Yeah, I mean, it's only, it's only, it's only a five-foot projection, so, you know, the amount that it would encroach would be very small.
Just as one member, I'm just bringing it up, I don't, I, if you wanna move forward with it, I, as one member, I'm fine with that, I'm just bringing up an issue that, that these, that someone else may bring up when you apply for a permit.
Yep, I understand where you're pointing.
What side yard there, David, 15?
15.
Well, I gotta tell you, that's darn close to 15, because if you take the five feet, I'm being a little bit, watch this.
Now, there's no way to tell from this.
I'll tell you, wow, that is really close. If you take and scale that five feet, put a dot on your little piece of paper?
Right.
Multiply it times three, and then go from the side yard?
Yep, yep, I see what you're saying.
It's within, like, inches.
It's right near the 15-foot mark?
It's right there.
Yes, it's a very good point.
So, just your decision.
So we don't even know what it is, though?
Well, we don't, but my attitude is, is I would presume zone, if someone's gonna bring that up, if he's asked for a front yard setback, if we were, we see fit to give him the front yard setback, if he's, if he's not asking for side yard, and finally he finds out he needs side yard, he's gonna have to come back to his board.
Correct.
But I would presume somebody's gonna ask him what that number is, correct? Am I correct, David?
Well, when this gets filed, it should be on there anyway.
Well, if you...
Because it's gonna be signed off.
Yeah, I mean, it's an oversight on mine, I didn't look at it.
Yeah, but you could ask him for that.
I didn't even consider that, and that's...
You could ask him for that before you permit.
That's a very good point, it could be conforming, and then, and this makes it non-conforming.
And that, and that would be an additional, we, we don't have, that would be a variance.
Well, let me ask you that, let me ask you this, if this makes sense to approach it this way, how about I get the engineer out there to shoot it and get a definitive number? If it's greater than 15 feet, it's a non-issue, correct? Do we agree? Is that correct?
On that specific issue, it's a non-issue, sir.
Yes.
If it's greater than, if the side yard setback is 15, you're gonna add the five on an angle like that, and it's greater than 15, I would presume it's not an issue.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm assuming coming forward that five feet and then measuring across, if it's, if it's 15 feet or greater, it's going to be compliant.
Correct.
So, so I'm asking, if I, if I go ahead and do that and bring that to Dave, would that be acceptable?
That's up to the chairman.
Yeah. Would that be acceptable?
Whatever it is, before we sign this?
Yep.
I wanna know what it is on this point.
Okay.
Now, if it's less than 15, you're gonna have to come back.
I understand, but if it's greater than 15, do I need to come back? That's my question. Can David, does David have the authority?
Yeah, I would agree.
So I would, I would...
You wouldn't need a variance.
Yeah, no, I know, I just wanted to know if you can grant the frontage issue?
Sure.
Tonight, and then David, David doesn't move forward unless, until I produce?
Right.
Another copy of this with the definitive number on it?
When we move forward, this won't be signed off, and it won't be official, do you come back with that number on there?
Right.
Stamped by the engineer?
Yep, I understand.
So it'll be conditioned on that?
Absolutely.
So if, if I were to have to ask to make the motion, which I presume I'll be asked?
Yes, you will.
For some strange reason, I, I envision that. So are you saying that...
It's conditioned on a new plot plan with...
Submitted to this board prior to asking for a building permit?
Right. I'm not, I'm not gonna sign it until it's on there.
Okay.
Right.
I just wanna make sure the motion's gonna be correct.
I also have a question, what is the existing in the proposed lot coverage?
Um...
It's not anywhere on, that I can find.
I think it was 8%, I believe.
Eight?
Eight, eight percent.
I get concerned when somebody says, "I think it was."
I get very concerned.
Well, I don't, I did the calculations, and it was on the, it was on the building permit application, which I've already submitted.
Okay, well, when, when you submit a new plot plan?
Yep.
That Jonathan has asked for, that should be on there also.
You want the lot coverage of just that added garage?
Of present and proposed.
I'm a little concerned that when you say 8%, and when you look at the structures compared to the lot?
Yep.
It can't be 8%. It's just impossible. In my wild, I mean, you look at the lot, it's gotta be a third of the lot? Yeah, I get it, but look at, something doesn't seem right.
See, the surveyor has to put that number in.
It doesn't seem right, it just doesn't, when you look at that, David, you get, when you look at that house, it's only 8% of the lot.
That includes the...
There's no way!
There's a deck there, right?
Yeah, pretty close to...
Deck counts?
A third?
Yep, yep.
At least, that, that would be 33%.
I don't know about 33.
Well, even, it's more than eight, is my point, which is, say?
So of everything that's existing, or, or what's proposed, I'm...
Everything that's existing.
Both, what's existing? And what's proposed for lot coverage?
Gotcha.
So, but, but we asked for what's existing, and what's, and then what you, what you would have if we approved your proposal?
Gotcha.
So that we can understand where we're at, right?
Yep, right.
And so I'm just looking at this, and you're saying what exists, correct if I'm wrong, prior to this five-foot addition, you're at 8%?
Yep.
I gotta tell you, when you consider the deck?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, when you consider, and you're saying you go from eight to nine, so let's look at the nine, let's forget about eight, let's look at the nine. When you look at the deck, you look at your 12-by-21 addition, you're going up 1% by adding the 12-by-21 addition?
Right.
And the 5-by-20, whatever it is, and the recon, well, you don't have to, the reconstructed porch is already there, just doesn't seem it's 1%.
What's the size of this lot?
It's 100 by 165.
So 16, 16,500 square feet?
Yep.
So if the house is, what's, what's the size of the house?
Uh, the existing house, I, I've only got the dimensions on the addition.
Just the existing? Without, without the decks or anything?
Let's see if I have it on the floor plan?
Yeah, so...
If it's shown.
All that stuff's supposed to be on here.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, you know, the existing dwelling dimensions are not all shown on the, on the drawing, the architectural drawing. You know, the area that we were adding, yeah, it's not shown, it's not, the existing, the entire existing house is not shown on the architectural drawings, so I have to...
If I could just say this, I'm not against your application, I'm actually in favor of a five-foot addition.
Yep.
Subject to gaining further knowledge that I don't have right now.
Okay.
Which is lot coverage, which is that side yard setback?
Yep.
As one member, I'd like to see the plan first.
Me, too.
It's just too much.
I think we should continue.
And I'm not against the application.
Yep.
I'm in favor of it, subject to gaining the knowledge that I don't have right now.
Right, and honestly, I can extract it from these plans.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to go to the site and measure the building as it exists, because a lot of the building, because we're only adding on a little piece of the end, the architect only showed that little side of the building, so...
So just as...
Have the engineer put all the information we're asking for?
Yep.
Right on here.
So lot coverage pre, lot coverage post, if you were able to get it, it's approved?
Yep.
And side yard setback, if you were to get the five-foot addition?
Got you.
Please. I'm only speaking as one person.
No, I agree, I have no problem with it.
When's the next meeting, February 20th? Can you get it done by that?
I should have no problem, as long as the engineer's available to reshoot everything. It should be no problem.
Would you like us to continue until then?
If you can't make a motion tonight with the data that you've got, then yes, I would ask for continuance.
Okay.
And what is that date again, Mary Ann?
January 25th.
So you're asking for a continuance until January 25th?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request on 65 Redwood Circle for an extension until January, what was it, 25th, did you say?
Yep.
January 25th.
Second.
Okay, Jim seconds. Uh, Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Good luck.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do?
Smart man.
No, I do not, but it's only, it's only...
You know, average grade. You never...
12.
Sir? Sorry, Mary Ann, I wrote on mine.
Send it in.
You can yell at me later. I don't care, pick whatever you wanna give me.
I think we're on the next board meeting. I don't think you wrote on yours, so I thought...
I haven't heard anything from you.
Yeah.
As far as the...
It's probably, couldn't you say?
Come on.
I didn't wanna push him, but I assume that's...
I wasn't, yeah, I know.
Say 18.
Because it still has to go...
That's what I was saying, nah, 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 no problem.
Oh, boy. What, me?
Not going off the rails at that point. I was okay after that.
Appreciation time.
Nothing else to sign, right? We're good.
I know, but you're...
All right, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing, please?
49 Clover Lane, owner Samuel and Cilio Ordones, request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a raise and replace of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district and Pompan asset overlay district, map 117, parcel 348, Mashpee, Mass.
How are you, counsel?
Kevin's back.
We thought you were on vacay forever.
We're retired. Thank you, thank you very much.
Phil, we can share.
It's always a pleasure to be back.
Come back. Share.
Do you have enough, or?
Oh, well, we got more.
You lucky guy.
Got a house plan?
I like the way you take on it. Pass the rest.
Okay, on this one, I'm going to have Charlie sit on us, taking Scott's place.
I have to say that it's probably the first time I've had a tie-on since the last time I was here. Pinch hitting for the younger generation.
He was doing well in your absence, by the way.
Well, that's good to hear.
You should, you should be proud.
Good, I am.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Father Record Kevin Corain, and I represent the Ordones in connection with the special permit application that you have before you this evening for the raise and replacing of a single-family residential structure at 49 Clover Lane in the Pompan asset neighborhood in the town of Mashpee. I have Mark Flaherty, who is the engineer, who has prepared the plans that you have before you this evening, and certainly available to respond to any questions that the board may have. As indicated in the written presentations that have been submitted to the board, this is a 6,500-square-foot lot, at least according to the subdivision control law, and has the appropriate amount of frontage. In fact, it's a corner lot having frontage on both Clover Lane and BS Road. There is a single-family, two-bedroom residential structure on the lot that you see there, about 800 square feet. There is a washed deck area that's attached to the building, and the building itself was built sometime back in the 1940s. The applicants seek to raise and replace that structure with a new two-and-a-half-story, three-bedroom structure on the lot, which the first-floor coverage consists of about 1,100, little over 1,100 square feet. There is a two-foot overhang on the second floor, all of which has been calculated into the lot coverages that have been presented to the board as shown on the plan and as contained in the submission that was prepared by Attorney Christopher Corain. The existing structure is non-conforming. It's non-conforming in several respects. It doesn't meet the front yard requirement of 25 feet in that one of the front yard setbacks is 21.5. It doesn't meet the side yard setback on one side, the side yard setback required 15 feet, and it is only 10 feet point six. And based upon a recently decided land court case, which of course is a land court case and not necessarily final authority, because it hasn't been decided by the appeals court or the, or the Supreme Judicial Court, nonetheless, we will apply, discuss the decision that was made relative to how lot area is determined based upon the court's finding in that particular case. That particular case requires land subject to coastal flow, coastal storm flows to be deducted from lot area when dealing with raise and replace projects, or any project for that matter. And this entire lot is in a floodplain, therefore the entire lot is subject to that limitation. So in fact, the lot area for that purposes has zero square footage.
So you're 100% lot coverage?
That's correct. We are 100% lot coverage at the present time. That is a non-conforming condition. The new structure will also be 100% lot coverage because it too is going on a lot that has zero lot area if you deduct the floodplain from the lot area. The statute, as you know, of the bylaw, as you know, allows for alterations, changes, and expansions to pre-existing non-conforming conditions, structures and otherwise. And in this particular case, the new structure that is being proposed improves some of those non-conforming conditions and eliminates others. So for example, the front yard setback is improved as shown on the chart that we provided. It was 21.5 feet from Clover Lane, now it's 23 feet. So that's an improvement of the front yard, yet still non-conforming because it doesn't meet the 25-foot setback from Clover Lane. The side yard setback on the southerly side was 10.5 feet. Now that setback is 15 feet, and that setback conforms to the current zoning requirement of 15 feet. The structure, because I'm sure David is gonna take the position that it's in a floodplain, the new structure and the new building code and will, and the enhanced building requirements for building in a floodplain will have to apply to this particular structure, the new structure, which don't exist with regard to the existing structure. So that, too, I would suggest to the board, is a substantial improvement over the existing condition. And last but not least, we have a non-conforming lot coverage, we still have a non-conforming lot coverage, and arguably, you could cover as much of that lot within the parameters of the side yard, front yard, and rear yard setbacks without any limitation, except the limitation that this board and the Conservation Commission may impose upon development on that particular lot. I'd suggest to the board that a good guide for this board to consider, even though we're dealing with a floodplain lot, is the standard that the board has applied for as long as I have been appearing before this board in the Pompan asset overlay district, which is a 25% lot coverage is allowed in the Pompan asset overlay district. And apart from the floodplain issue, the current lot coverage is 13%, and the proposed lot coverage is 22.5. So still under the 25 that this board has typically allowed over the years for development in this Pompan asset overlay district. So I would suggest to the board that based upon all of those criterias and the improvements that are being made relative to the house, the last but not least is the installation of a denitrification septic system, where there was no D-nite before, that too is an improvement over the existing condition. I would suggest to the board that what we're proposing is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing condition and its impact on the neighborhood, and I would suggest that the board would be well within its discretion to grant the appropriate special permit relief in this particular case. I would also point out that the Conservation Commission has already approved this project. And with that, I'll be happy to respond to any questions the board has. Well, the Board of Health is also approving.
Board of Health as well, right?
That's correct.
So you're not, you're not creating any new non-conformities?
That is correct.
You are reducing two non-conformities?
Reducing one, eliminating another.
Now, you're at 100% lot coverage, right?
I guess that's what it would be if you deemed the lot to be zero.
So I'm in a place where I don't know the right way to go here, because I certainly think that a pre-existing non-conforming will give you the footprint that you have right now, no matter what. But to increase it, even though it's going from 100 to 100, I'm not sure where that stands. So I'm, what I'm asking you for is give me a good argument why I should say yes.
Well, because you have to, the basic finding that you have to make to vote no on a proposal would be that the new structure is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists, okay? And I suggest that even though the lot coverage is increasing, that still with the other aspects of non-conforming conditions, the front yard setback, the side yard setback, the construction consistent with floodplain criteria, and the installation of a denitrification septic system in and of itself will improve conditions on that lot in spite of any minimal increase in lot coverage.
I concur with your statement.
I do, too.
Okay, um, let me give you a scenario. Let's say that it's not 100%, but it's, I don't know, pick a number, 10%?
If you take the floodplain out of it, current conditions is 13, proposed conditions is 22.5.
Okay, but let's... Okay. But let's say that, in fact, it was, I don't know, you take, what is it, 6,500 square foot lot?
That's correct.
So, let's say it was 5,000. In other words, 1,500 has to be taken out because of. So, I'm trying to get my...
I'm not sure where the 1,500 is coming from. If it's in a floodplain, the whole 5,000 has to come up.
No, I'm painting a scenario where I'm trying to back into what you're saying. So, let's say we had a, an issue where 1,500 of the 6,500 was in a floodplain. So, you're only allowed to work with 5,000 square feet. Would your math apply to that?
It depends on what's there. I mean, if you have a 5,000 square foot lot, okay, you'd have to take...
Then you'd have to go by...
You'd have to go and see how much of that lot is covered by structure, determine what...
Do you see where I'm going with this? Just because it's 100% doesn't mean there's a green light.
There is a break point, and I've done the study. I spent a lot of time, it's late today. There is a break point where the theory doesn't hold up, where the lot coverage due and utilizing floodplain and/or section 40, right, state, you know, section 640, using that and reducing your lot coverage, there is a break point where it doesn't work. Meaning, what he's getting at, how do I put this? Let's just say you're at 19, at 20, let's say you're at 19.5 on your lot coverage. I'm trying, I get it, this is not easy.
I agree.
Using...
You'd have to have a conforming, you'd have to have a conforming lot coverage.
No, even in a non-conforming scenario...
And if you're non-conforming, you can expand however you want.
I get it, but, well, subject to this board finding, it's not more detrimental.
That's absolutely correct.
Where this board has its authority, where the board that's going to stand, we're going to stand on the authority is detrimental or not detrimental.
That's correct.
And I get you. Because of the finding, this remand, I think it slips this board into a different territory. And that is, it's more decision-making is based on detrimental or not detrimental.
Your decision-making has always been based on...
I agree, but it's now more based on that. Because right now, you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying, we're expanding a non-conformity, which you have a right to do, subject to our making a decision that is not more detrimental. So, our rights then rely on totally detrimental or non-detrimental.
That's correct.
Non-onlot coverage or lot thereof.
Well, it does, because you still have to make a finding that you have a non-conforming condition.
Well, I mean, we're clear it's non-conforming. I mean, under the decision, it was just handed down by town council, right?
What's that?
Under the decision that was just handed down by the courts or the judge, this would look like, at least by the land court, this would look like a scenario that is totally, totally non-conforming. Because it is, the whole lot is covered.
That's correct.
All right? So, using that theory, our only right as a board to make a decision is based on detrimental or not detrimental.
In part, as well as the non-conforming condition, because that land court case also made reference to the fact that it wasn't discussed in that decision whether or not lot coverage is non-conforming.
I get you, but I...
And the court said that that non-conformity could be increased if that is a non-conforming...
Right. But as one member, it is clear to me that under that same opinion by that same judge who says you've got to take that out of the lot coverage, you're in the A-zone. The bottom line is, is if you have to remove it from lot coverage, this whole lot you are covering 100%. That's a given. There's no, there can be no argument on that.
That's right.
Using the judge's decision...
Using that interpretation.
So, that being said, using the judge's interpretation, the only decision this board can make based on using the judge's interpretation is, is it more detrimental or not in reference to...
I would agree.
Lot coverage.
I would agree. I would agree.
Right.
I would agree with you. But I think in making that determination, you have to take these factors into account, as well as, as well as that footnote in the bylaw on the way it reads. That is a bylaw, as I view it, which is intended to protect wetland resource areas, okay? It's based upon the Wetland Protection Act, whether it's the 50-foot setback or whether it's the lot coverage. It's intended to protect wetland resource areas. And in this particular case, the body in town that has been given the primary authority to determine what is in the best interest of wetland resource area is the Conservation Commission. And in this particular case, as in virtually all the cases I think we've dealt with over the years, the Conservation Commission has approved the development that has been proposed.
I will go further than that.
So, I would say that's an added factor.
I agree, but I will go even further than that. And this is really probably reinforcing your statement. If you look at the house today, it doesn't have a D night system. It's not raised like someone's going to make you do, like the state code's going to make you do it. It's not going to be built to that standard. It isn't built to that standard today, right?
That's correct.
There's one setback that's going to be reduced, and there's going to be one that's going to be in compliance.
That's correct.
And so, I'm looking at it saying, it would be hard for me as one member only to say it's going to be more detrimental. For me, again, I mean, I have many avenues where I can go down where I disagree with people on other issues, but on this one, I simply say we're gaining a D night system, which if we don't have this, a D night here soon, we're probably going to get one soon, because rules will change presumably, but it's going to get, happen sooner than later. And you're going to get a house that's, you know, that's constructed as purported to be proper in this zone.
First of all, it has to be above the floodplain.
Okay? And we're improving one setback, and we're complying with one setback that's not in compliance. I don't see how you can argue, at least from my own stance, that it's not less detrimental.
100% agree.
The other thing is that the existing structure doesn't have any dry wells, as far as I can tell.
That's a good one, too.
The new structure, consistent with the Conservation Commission approval, is going to require dry wells so that your, all your runoff, et cetera, is being held, roof runoff is being held on site.
Yep.
That's another improvement.
I'm there. Got it. And I do concur, as one member, that you are 100% lot coverage. Under the theory of a judge, the basis decision, under his theory, you're 100% lot coverage.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
So, you can't go any more than 100%.
It's new territory for...
So, other than you cannot create any new non-conformities without a variance, all right?
That's correct.
You could, if this lot was big enough, if this was a five-acre lot in wetland, in the floodplain, if you could comply with all your setbacks and all the rest, you could make this house 24,000 square feet.
That's correct.
With us determining it's not more detrimental.
Exactly.
That's important.
And subject to the Conservation Commission.
All right, how does that make sense, though?
Well, I'm not, I didn't write, I didn't write the bylaw, you know, so, you know, but it makes sense.
Just to, for the two cents, for the board, is that it's not substantially more detrimental that exists prior to the removal of existing structure and that there is adequate land to provide sufficient parking.
Correct.
That's what's...
Correct.
That's what we're here to rule on tonight.
That's what's, so, we haven't talked about parking.
That's all we're here to rule on. I couldn't agree more. Again, I think the gist of this whole scenario, the basis is, is it, or is it not more detrimental in reference to the lot coverage?
The fact of the matter is, there's no evidence that this lot is in a wetland or is a wetland.
But we, but that's not us to decide.
It's all based upon an elevation figure.
It's in Zone A.
There can be, there can be buildings and lots that are developed that are a mile away from the water, and they fall in the floodplain, and they're subject to this. If anybody's got a vacant lot out there that's in a floodplain, they have a problem.
Huge.
Big time.
But that's not, that's not...
That's not our problem.
That's not tonight.
That's not our problem, right.
Jim, you must have some thoughts on this. You were in conservation up in Leominster. Did you get into any of this at all?
I think that since the non-conformity and detrimental to the...
You need to speak into the mic.
And detrimental to the neighborhood. I mean, I don't see any problem with this application. You know, it's, it is what it is, and you can't do anything with it. And I think that people have done what they could within the bylaws. And the non-detrimental aspect of it controls the whole thing. So, I would be in favor of the project as it complies with the bylaws. That's the way I look at it, Mr. Chino.
Charlie, what do you think?
Well, you know, my thought is that, you know, specific to the totality of this situation and under the law as we understand it to be in the bylaws, it is certainly not more detrimental than what was there before. The proposal is less detrimental than what was there before. So, I would be in favor of it.
I have no, I have no issues with this.
It is, it is interesting, but, but just as an aside, you know, apart from this new issue that's been created, I mean, in this district, a 25% lot coverage has been allowed. And even this lot coverage is below the 25. So, if you were dealing with a piece of upland, you know, 25, this lot coverage wouldn't give you a problem at all. It's only the crazy way that the, that this bylaw impacts some of these areas as it's now being interpreted that's giving you an issue.
Well, it's impacting a huge percentage of Pompan asset.
It's going to impact a huge percentage of the town.
Oh, yeah.
A huge percentage of the town is located in a floodplain, I believe.
I thought of many theories. There are many theories, I think, that probably haven't even been looked at yet that will come to this board.
Oh, I'm sure.
In reference to this issue, without a doubt. And it's going to put a lot of pressure on. I think the zoning force and officer and this board to make decisions that are going to be, you know, precedent-setting, new world.
Unless the bylaw is amended so that it, that it basically reads consistent with the way the board has interpreted over the years, that it's got to be water or wetland, but not necessarily wetland as defined by the State Wetland Protection Act, because, you know, floodplain's typically on wetlands.
Counselor, you actually were instrumental in getting the raise and request, raise and rebuild passed. Here's another task.
You should have thought of that. It's all your fault. You didn't work right.
That's right.
Well, you know, I have suggested a modification to that bylaw. Well over a year ago, I raised a question about this issue, this particular issue. And nobody chose to act on it, but...
The not more detrimental is always going to be subjective to a certain degree, depending upon the particular...
That's why we exist, right?
And that's why we're here.
One of the reasons that we're here.
So, the issue is that we've got to be consistent in how we interpret that. That's the important thing.
So, bottom line for this board tonight, we need to determine whether it's more detrimental or not more detrimental, and we need to determine there's adequate parking. And I think if you've read the presentation by Kevin Corrane or Chris Corrane, there is adequate parking, and I believe it's not more detrimental than what previously existed. That's just my opinion.
All right, so let me ask you. How many cars will be able to be parked on the lot?
At least two.
And that's what's required, too, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, the driveway certainly is large enough for two cars.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments before I ask? Okay, anybody in the audience, come right up if you would. Give us your name and address. Grab one of those speakers, if you would, maybe.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Colombo, 35 Meadowbrook Road. I'm also the chairman of the Mashpee Conservation Commission. I found it uplifting to hear a lot of reference to conservation tonight. I found it ironic that you, sir, were on the Leominster Conservation Commission, because I was also the vice chair of the Leominster Conservation Commission before I moved to Mashpee.
What year was that?
That was 2018.
I was there from '78.
Yeah.
Or about 14 years.
But I've had a lot of experience in conservation commissions. I was also the chairman of the Clinton Conservation Commission and also the Clinton Conservation Commission's full-time agent. When I hear tonight the word detrimental, I, I was here, by the way, I know, Ron, you know I was here at the last meeting, and I came to be educated, because I found it rather difficult to understand, as I know you people tonight are finding it difficult to understand, is where do you get the lot coverage if it's wetland? And land subject to coastal flow, you might not like it to be a wetland. It is. And that has been clearly upheld in the recent land court decision. And when I think of the word detrimental, and I think of a building that is about to be increased in size, I'm not thinking detrimental in terms of aesthetics or in a comparison to how it, you know, my neighbor looks, and do I have a swimming pool, or maybe you don't have a swimming pool. I think of it purely as lot coverage, because everything that goes into that lot forces that storm-flow water somewhere else. And that, to me, is detrimental. If you're going to allow a building to expand in a coastal floodplain and look around, go down to the beach two weeks ago, we had a catastrophic storm. And there was no storm surge, the top wind rate was 62 miles per hour, and our coastline took quite a hit. So, I think of detrimental as protecting that floodplain. And until state law changes, you have to abide by it. I think that's what the judge was saying in the land court decision. So, again, I'm here to be educated. I'm neither for nor against this proposal. I know it said that, and I said this two weeks ago, you get a letter from the Conservation Commission, and it says it's been approved. I'm going to ask our agent tomorrow night that all correspondence that comes back to your board from our commission include the vote. Because approval doesn't mean unanimous. There are people that do dissent, and when they do, they should be listened to, even if they are in the minority. Because what they're doing is they're giving a message. And the message now is really being upheld by the land court. And I have a vested interest because I'm going to open up a hearing tomorrow night, and they're the same issues. So, I have to abide by, you know, what the land court is saying unless, or until, there's an appeal and something's overturned. So, again, I'm here to be educated, and I'm just curious to see how you proceed with your...
Can I have a question for you?
Sure.
Were you aware that this particular lot, 49 Clover, was in 100% in the...
100%.
You were aware of it?
Yeah.
May I ask?
And it was still approved?
It was approved.
So, you were probably a descending vote?
At the approval of the lot, when a commission looks at a lot, they're doing the exact same thing you're doing. They're looking at, in the end, is it a better product than what's there? And when someone comes with a D night system, and they come with a lot of real pluses...
Can I add to that, if I may? And I don't want to interrupt, but I think I need to interact with you while you're going.
Sure.
So, we as a board do very much the same thing that you were just speaking.
Exactly.
So, I'm sitting here now saying, all right, I have a building that's sitting on a lot, and it's sitting in a floodplain. That building is in the middle of that lot, which is in the middle of a floodplain.
Yes.
It's not built to floodplain standards. It's built to 50-year-old standards, which if there is a flood in that A-zone, which is going to happen, it's happened already, if it happens, that building is not going to be able to deal with it. It's got flood insurance, all that stuff, right?
Sure.
So, now, my options are as follows as a board member here. I get to see a D night system sooner than later instead of waiting a year or two or three, okay? I get to see improvement on setbacks and the elimination of even one of the non-conformities. And I get to see a building built overseen by that gentleman right there. It's going to be built under the new regulations...
Yep.
For floodplains.
Exactly.
So, I sit there and say, how can I, as a member, say it's not going to be, it's going to be more detrimental? I can't. Now, as you sit on the Conservation Commission, you have a five-member board, three members vote...
Seven-member board.
Seven-member board, so what, four members vote in favor of it, five members vote in favor? Again, if, being a member of this board, if I saw your votes, if it was still an approval, I would still have to go with that approval. I understand where you're going with it, at least it's not, maybe it isn't unanimous. But again, my big stance on this whole application is for me, it is far less detrimental. The improvements that will be made to this property are in the best interests of this community, even though it's all in the floodplain. It's in the best interest of this community, it's in the best interest of the homeowner. No one loses, in my opinion, if this were to be approved tonight, the way it's submitted. The environment, the town, the insurance for floodplains, you name it, no one loses.
I would have to tend to agree with that if we're talking about storm flowage. The houses are built today to allow for that storm flowage to do what it does. This house that's there is a roadblock and all it's going to do is build up pressure until something gives, which is going to be the house. So it doesn't matter if it's bigger. It's going to help with, the, the, nature's going to do what it's going to do. And, and, and when you build to that height, the water will just keep on doing what it does. What is detrimental is if what's been lately proposed is filling that zone with fill. And that is going to constrict and that will change the, the water going to other places. So I don't see this coming in with a code conforming building that is allowing for the, for the floodplain to be built. And actually, when it's done, these people can apply for a Loma that takes them out of the floodplain. The house will be out of the floodplain if it's built according to FEMA regulations and, and, and the building code.
If I think it's closing, I believe our community. Our community is gaining by this application, in my opinion. I'm no loser.
Dave, would you explain that, taking it out of the?
The lowest, the lowest floor, what takes you out of the flood, floodplain is not because, you know, you have a foundation on that. It's the lowest floor elevation. So that's above, that's at the design flood, the flood, design flood elevation was just one foot higher than, than, than the flood elevation. So it, in this case, be 11, so the lowest floor is going to be at 12. Everything else, the water's going to flow, it's not going to build up pressure, it's going to do what, what it does in a normal storm. Now, we got a, a house there that is going to be blocking that and building up and, until something gives.
And when, when we have that storm, this house gets wiped out for some time.
It's going to get wiped out and.
Under the new theory, new construction home, the, the velocity is going to flow under the house or through the house and it's probably, probably not going to get wiped out.
All right, so tell me about, tell me about the flow going under the house, around it?
They have flood vents that basically allow for the water, the impending water to go, to, to not build up pressure in, in the house or outside the house. So it's, it's the same inside the house as it is out.
So it's basically like a household stilts?
Exactly. That's, that's what it's.
The water can go through.
So it's much less detrimental than a solid foundation which exists today, no matter what size it is.
Can I ask you a question? You know, when the, when the Conservation Commission looks at a project, either approve or not approve, is one of the things that the Conservation Commission looks at is whether or not it's, it's going to be more or less detrimental if approved?
We don't have that language in our bylaw. That's not in the wetlands bylaw. It's in your zoning bylaw.
Yeah, that's not part of their purview at all, is it?
And when I've asked, I've been told that, that it's not our purview. And that's, you know, that's, in essence, that's why I'm here. I'm here to listen to you exercise your purview. But what I'm doing is I'm giving you my view, which is coming from a different household, a different set of rules.
So.
And if I may, I do agree with you, Dave, that, you know, you're talking about, you know, one of the biggest problems is fill in, in the floodplain. That swimming pool, in my estimation, is fill. I mean, nothing's going to flow through that. So, and that's being calculated into the lot coverage. So we're not just talking about a house, which indeed, I, I, I get it. I get flow vents, I get stilts. I, I spent time in a house down at Rodan's, North Carolina. I know what stilts are all about. But that pool is taking up quite a.
If you elevate the pool, I would, I would agree with that. But if it's on the ground level, it's fine. The water's, it's already full.
And again, coming from a different household and a different set of rules, land subject to coastal flow isn't just for the flow, it's for the compensatory storage of the floodwaters.
It does very little to this board. It does very little to change the criteria of what this board does.
Did you have a split vote on this particular?
I don't recall, I'd have to go back and look at the file.
Okay.
You're here representing yourself, not the Conservation.
That's why I said 35 Meadowbrook Road.
Yep.
Bob's neighbor.
Okay.
And again, I'm here, just like I was for 338 Monomus Goy on your last agenda. I'm here to be educated. I'm curi, especially in light of the decision, you know, I have to deal with that decision tomorrow night as well because it, it does knock on our door. We have a couple of projects. In fact, I think there's three of them that have land subject to coastal flow on tomorrow night's agenda. So anyways, I just wanted to.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, do we have anything to read in?
Water Health, 49 Clover Lane, septic approved, three bedrooms as inspection needed. And then I got a later email saying that Zeberry is happy with the pest inspection. Conservation, 49 Clover Lane, this project has been approved by the Conservation Committee. That's it for comments.
Okay. Anything else? Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Samuel and Ciel Ordones of 49 Clover Lane under section 17417, one of the zoning bylaw to allow for a raise and replace of a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in R3 zoning district and Pompaness and Overlake District map, 117 parcel 328 Mashpee Mass with the following conditions. One, was determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit on a master general lot, 48 section nine. Two, sewer disposal system prepared by, prepared for Samuel C. and Cielo Ordes, 49 Clover Lane, date November 15, 2022, drawn by MMF, scale one inch equals 10 feet. Drawing name 49 Clover Lane, site plan 1115, 2022, prepared by Flaherty and Stefani Inc., stamped and signed by John F., John R. Farren, professional land surveyor number 33590, and Mark M. Flaherty, registered professional engineer number 33853. Three, house plans, Ordones residence, 49 Clover Lane, Mashpee Mass, plan date 111522, drawn by SPB, scale quarter inch equals one foot, prepared by Designs by SPB, signed and stamped by John Martin, structural register, professional engineer number 34288. A1, right, front, rear, and left elevations. A2, proposed first and second floor plans. S1, proposed foundation plan, first floor framing plan in section A. S2, second floor framing plan and roof framing plan. Number four, condition and all town department comments written in the record. And I'd like to also make in the following part of my motion that the board also finds that the pre-existing non-conformities are not substantially more detrimental, that the post, the future planned are not more detrimental than existing prior to the removal of existing structure, that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking. And I make specific note that those improvements included are not limited to a denitrification system. The rear lot line has, in, non-conformity has been eliminated. Am I correct, counsel?
Side yard.
Side yard has been eliminated.
Southern side yard.
Southern side yard has been eliminated and the, its front yard has been reduced, non-conformity. And that's, and that's why I find, that's why the motion is being made in reference to being not more detrimental.
Okay, Jim Serkins, Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
A pleasure to be with you all again.
Were you heading back now? Like you're getting in a plane and flying home?
He'll be back on Friday.
Oh, that's.
What's wrong with this picture when retired dad is at a board meeting? You're cutting yourself down.
He's got dad figured out, that's all. Charge him appropriately, I hope.
I'll extract something out of him.
Bill? Should I sign these? Bill, sign these.
Yes, I think so.
Maybe that was his plan, moving down there.
Not a bad plan.
You know, this did not expand.
Pretty good. Three kids under the age of four in the Bahamas.
I shoot myself.
We all agree with this.
There isn't.
No.
Chairman's not supposed to do that. Where?
Hey, Bill?
Yeah?
Second lineup.
Right there, buddy. Right there.
Oh, wait, you got it, dokey.
His day is the eleventh.
You're going to create a new block for, box for extension, Jonathan?
I think we need more info on this.
Got a long ways to go.
Absolutely. Okay, and right there, Bill. One more. Yep. Second lineup.
Yep.
Jesus, Bill, you're going to ride this cramp now. She's not going to give you a break on this one. Very good, Bill, you're doing well.
Oh, thank you.
George, you're going to sit on the next one.
Okay.
Well done. All right, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
Council House, owners John H. and Susan M. Nocera, requesting written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a front deck addition to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 243, Mashpee, Mass.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Peter Barsamian. I'm the general contractor for the Noceras. And I'm here tonight to ask for relief specifically for the, on the front setback to allow the, the building of a replacement deck in the front. The lot is a peculiar lot. It's, there's, there's a few pre-existing, non-conforming dimensions on it. In particular, the, the front, the frontage is an arc-shaped line. The existing house is, is, is not in compliance with the, the new setbacks or the zoning setbacks at 18 feet to the arc shape. So most of the house, almost half the house is actually outside of the setbacks. The, the existing porch is just a, a, just a walkout stoop-type porch, which is also outside the setbacks. The, the proposed deck is a sitting deck. It's not protruding any further than the existing, existing house corner at 18 feet. It's just a wooden deck with an overhang, overhang porch on it. The dimensions are just seven feet off the existing house and it's approximately 16 feet long.
Okay, so the deck, is there a deck underneath it or something, or? I see a line underneath there, below the blue. Looks like there was, was there something underneath there?
It's the existing.
It's an existing porch, a walkout porch. It's just kind of like a.
No.
Is that what you're referring to?
Okay, so you're, you're turning it into a deck and you're actually expanding it by 4.2 feet out? Am I seeing that right?
That's the rear, sir. That's the rear, which is in conformance. That's the rear deck.
Yeah.
It's the front deck, at the front of the house that's the issue. The rear deck is.
Says new carpet porch on the bond.
Yeah, I'm looking at the plot plan, that's what I'm looking at.
You may have the jugular cheeses, you know?
Oh, nobody's got to respect me.
Okay, so I see a proposed porch and a deck, proposed addition.
Yes, so we're referring to the front proposed porch. The rear proposed addition is in conformance.
Got it. I just was trying to find out what was actually happening.
Is the deck?
So it doesn't need any variances or anything?
Correct.
Got it, sir. So the only variance needed is from the front. It's currently, or it's proposed to be 23.3, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this is R5, so what's, is it 40 feet on the front?
Yep.
So you'll need a 16.7?
He's not looking for a variance. He's looking for a written finding.
Because it's in it, because it's a pre-existing, non-conformity, all right?
Correct.
Just expanding.
Got it.
Is the 85-foot line, see that line, may I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
David, see that 85-foot lot line, the 18-foot-two distance?
I don't.
I'm wondering if that side yard or rear yard?
You want to see that?
Is that? So is that a?
It is an odd lot.
Yeah.
It's an odd-shaped lot.
It's very strange.
So that would be rear, right? That would be side? Now, this might be the rear, and this might be the side.
22.5 is going to be the new rear.
Yeah, so he's got more. And so with 18.2, he's all right because that's considered.
It's a side, that's a side.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, you good?
No, I'm good. So you're, so you're saying that 23.3 should be 40?
Nope, nope, it's the front porch, the front porch is, that, that is, he's not asking for relief.
Yes, so I, isn't that the?
He's looking for relief.
From that?
Sorry about that.
So what's the front yard set, what's the required setback, 40?
It's 40.
But it's currently at 18.0.
Correct, correct.
Got it.
The house itself is at 18, so we're not protruding any more than that.
So I don't understand, so if the house right now is at 18, even though the deck's at 23.3, the house is at 18. He's not getting any closer to the street.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I've got no issues.
That's true.
No.
That's good. See my?
I don't see it because I don't have the thing.
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah, so yeah.
I don't.
David, I have an extra copy if you like.
So you're saying he doesn't need relief?
No, no, it's fine. Look, my, my only point is he's pretty slammed up, so 18 feet.
He doesn't need anything.
He's 23.3, so technically, he's not getting any closer to the street. But.
I agree.
He's, he's expanding on the, on the.
Yeah, he's expanding the non-conform.
He is expanding and he's, he's still on the same side.
He doesn't need relief, but he does need a finding, right?
He needs a finding.
He needs a finding. I'm just saying that he's not, you're not getting any closer to the street because the house is already at 18.
Right.
But you just need a finding because he's at 23. He's expanding on the non-conform.
On that side, yeah.
Under 17417.
Right.
He's increasing the.
He's increasing an existing non-conformity.
Yes, he's increasing it, yeah.
Sure. So if someone were to make a motion, presumably, the relief, so really, I don't, I don't need to know the amount of the relief.
You don't.
No, is it detrimental?
Wait a minute. I'm missing this. How is he increasing the non-conformity? If the non-conformity is 18 right now.
Because he's adding another non-conformity at 23.3 because it's supposed to be 40.
But it's already at 18.
But he's expanding that non-conformity. He's expanding that non-conformity.
So he doesn't need relief, he just needs a written finding.
He needs, he needs, he needs a determination, yeah.
All right.
That it's not more detrimental.
And it doesn't need to be in an amount, per se. It's just a written finding.
Correct. He's, he's expanding that. So.
We got it, I think.
All right. Any comments, questions by anybody here? Anybody in the audience? Okay, Sharon, what do we have to read in?
Conservation, not Wetlands jurisdiction. Water Health, eight helmsman place, two remaining, two bedrooms. No other comments for construction of the project. It's going to stay two bedrooms.
You're aware of that. Everybody's aware of that.
Yes.
Two bedrooms. Good. Ron?
I'm just trying to, if I just, just trying to wrap my head around the actual design. So the new crawl space, so you're going to have a crawl space under the proposed porch?
Not the, not the one we're talking about. There's a crawl space on the rear addition.
Oh, yeah, I see, I got it rotated.
Under the deck?
Got it rotated, yeah.
Under the rear addition, not, there's no crawl space under the deck. Under the proposed porch. He's calling that a deck.
Well, it says deck, that's.
Yeah, I think that was the existing, he's showing the existing there too, which was there.
Okay. I'm good.
So do we have a lot coverage issue at all? We do not.
17. Nope.
Right on there.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Love to. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to John H. and Susan M. Nocera of Eight Helmsman Place. Said written finding is under section 17417 of the zoning bylaw to allow for construction of a front deck addition to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling and property located in an R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 243, Mashpee, Mass with the following conditions. One, board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding in a Master General Law, Section 48, 48, Section 6. Two, site plan showing proposed additions, Eight Helmsman Place, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by Canal Land Surveying and Permitting, Inc., job number 21-001. Date, 11/3/2021. Scale 1 inch equals 30 feet, drawn by PDR, checked by RJH. Stamped and signed by Richard Hood, Professional Land Surveyor, number 35031. Three, house plans. Prepared for Nocera Residence in Eight Helmsman Place, Mashpee, Mass. Scale quarter inch equals 1 foot, date 12/29/2021. Prepared by Ktuit Bay Design LLC. A1 first floor plan, A2 second floor plan, A3 front and right elevation. A4 left and rear elevations, A5 foundation, A6 second floor framing plan, A7 roof framing plan, A8 section plan. Four, condition and all town comments read into the record.
Okay, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Nice project. 11? Great. 23, I haven't made that mistake yet. On the 23. It's the first time in many years. Did you ever make that mistake, Bill, in January, right the wrong year?
The wrong year. You know what? Banks will accept it up until like February, March.
Really? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I wonder what, I wonder who picked up, who draws the line in the sand? It's this day we're going to accept the challenge.
Then they go, then they go us the check.
You're right, I've written something lately. I wonder, I probably wrote 2020.
They get flood elevation certificates and they have an expiration date on them. Some of them are like eight years old.
I can't hear you.
Did you get my check?
Yes. Thank you. Yes.
Check?
Check? Check?
Check's in the mail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mine was cash, okay? I don't write checks.
Mine was.
Not for that. Elche vote. No, because you're afraid.
Sharon, you're on the, you're on the next one.
I thought you were.
Sharon would.
No, you passed that down.
All right, Sharon, you're sitting on this next one. Sharon, would you read the next one?
121 Captain's Row, petitioner Basil J. Congro. Congro Remodeling, request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the alteration, extension of a front deck on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 48, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Charles E. and Ellen Sheehan.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, just let us know what you want to do.
Sure. My name is Basil Congro, Congro Remodeling. The project is 121 Captain's Row. And what we're looking to do is replace a decades-old deck with a new deck in the exact location that it is in currently.
That simple, huh?
Well.
Take the old one out, put the new one in?
Yeah, it should only take about five minutes. I'm waiting for the.
But nothing more complicated than that.
I'm waiting for the Carpenter app to come to my phone. I could just hit a button.
Yep. Nope.
Lot coverage is going to be the same because. Sure. Don't need replacing that stuff?
Yeah.
Well, it looks that way.
Am I missing something, Ron?
No, I'm just trying to see. Replace existing deck, it says.
So you're not increasing anything?
You're not increasing the size of it?
No, sir.
So you're taking an old deck off, putting a new deck on, in place of the old deck, in the same square footage, in the same place?
Wait, but this is way too easy.
Well, you save the best for last.
We're going to have some controversy here.
Yeah, we need controversy. Should have went alphabetically.
I don't think it's exactly the same.
Okay.
How about this? Would you like this, David?
This, this stair system, I would, other than that, I don't have an issue with it. Other than, I would probably ask for some engineering on it, because of the house overhang is on the existing deck.
The plans are, have been stamped by an engineer. And what the engineers do is the existing deck is built with an overhang, with a slight cantilever. What the engineer has done is brought the footings directly below.
Okay, I see the stamp.
The.
Yep.
Got it. All they did is move the footings.
Are the stairs in addition to, or?
No.
So again, just to be very clear, so you're taking stairs and deck, throwing them out, putting stairs and deck in as close to the proximity as possible where they were?
Yes, sir.
Just moving the footings.
Footings. Yeah, the existing footings are.
They're changing, they're, they're making some.
Existing footings are undersized.
Changing the, the non-conformity, they have to, they have to come.
So there's no, no reason to even ask about lot coverage?
No.
Not really.
As it is, we're at 18.5, it's on the.
And you're going to stay at 18.5, Ron? It seems to me, if that, if the answer was no to that, then you'd be, that's good.
David, do you have any issues with this?
I don't.
Anybody here?
No.
Anybody in the audience?
They're the homeowners, they better not.
There you go. Ron, would you make a motion?
I'd love to. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Basil J. Congro, Congro Remodeling, in reference to 121 Captain's Row. Said written finding is under section 17417 of the zoning bylaw, allow for an alteration, extension of a front deck. I'm a little concerned about alteration, extension. I'm going to just say alteration of a front deck on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 48, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Charles E. and Ellen Sheehan, with the following conditions. One, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding in a Master General Law, 48, Section 6. Two, certified plot plan, 121 Captain's Row, Mashpee, Mass, prepared for Charles E. and Ellen Sheehan. Date, November 28, 2022, prepared by EAS Surveying, Inc., stamped and signed by Edward A. Stone, Professional Land Surveyor, number 28980, date 11/28/22. Three, plans and sections, A-2, dash, period 1, new deck to replace existing 121 Captain Row, Mashpee, Mass, Congro Remodeling, PCAD, date 9/27/2022, S-21, structural plan stamped and signed by Michelle Cadelo, Structural Engineer, number 34774, date 10/322, A-31, exterior elevations. Four, condition and all town comments read into the record.
Hey, who has the, Jim seconds? Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Yay! Enjoy your new deck.
Okay. Signatures, please.
Oh, I forgot to pass this along.
Oh, don't worry about it, Billy.
Just a matter of whether it gets approved or not.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to approve meeting minutes of December 14, 2022.
All right. I was not at that meeting.
Neither was I.
Neither was I.
I was.
I was.
I was.
Okay, who voted on that?
I.
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 They were terrific minutes.
Excellent ones.
It was a terrific meeting without you guys there. They?
Appreciate that. Our time.
Wow, what a slap.
No, we didn't know what to do without you, actually.
Wow, feeling the heat now.
We lost our direction. We didn't know where to go.
I don't think so. I think you know exactly what it was. Probably it was a quick meeting.
Brad, would you like to make a motion to close?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second? Jim seconds, I think. All in favor?
All right.
Good night, everyone.